Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners reading for May 12th, 2025. I call this meeting to order and invite everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I invite everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. Okay. All right, our next item on our, this item of business is our agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Next, we have a public hearing, and Casey, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So there will be a public hearing tonight, and the following rules of procedure, as always, will apply to this hearing. From a notice standpoint, a notice was published in a newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards and website that exceeds or meets the statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of this hearing. Town clerk will be recording all comments in a concise and brief manner. Any written statements that has been submitted prior to the hearing will be made part of the record as well. If speaking tonight, please come to the microphone and at the podium here in the middle and state your full name. Also, give your address. There shall be no debates tonight, and we ask that you limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a three-minute period unless you're speaking for a group, in which case you shall receive a five-minute exception. This public hearing is coming to the order for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. It's a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 153.101 Ocean Impact Residential Zone setbacks to add setback requirements for residential lots not abutting the Atlantic Ocean. If anyone is interested in speaking with the, regarding this topic from the floor, do so now. Come up and share your thoughts. No? Jay? Nobody? Everybody? Okay. I'm gonna, nobody here speaks, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Casey. All right, any questions or comments about this? Entertainer motion, if someone would like to make it.
I'll make that motion. Section 153.101 Ocean Impact Residential Setbacks Add setback requirements for residential lots not abutting Atlantic Ocean is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the Town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides appropriate applicable setbacks for properties within the OAR zoning district that are not oceanfront while maintaining the town's three-tiered approach to land use.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's done. Now's the time we set aside for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any topic that they're choosing that pertains to the town. We do ask that when you are called upon, approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and identify yourself by name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you are speaking on behalf of a group. Anybody like to take advantage of our first public comment period this evening? All quiet, so we'll move on. Nothing to respond to. Town manager, do we have any ongoing business? All right, we'll move on. New business, item number one, site plan review 504 West Lake Drive, Building Three. Cameron?
All right. This evening, we are looking at a site plan review submitted by Beach Realty and Construction for a proposed interior mezzanine addition at 504 West Lake Drive. This is Building Three, Unit W. This was previously CrossFit Outer Banks. This is in the light industrial one zone. This is a addition of 995 square foot, second-floor office space addition. No changes are proposed for the site itself. The storage warehouse is a permitted use in the LI one zone, and attached to you will find the commercial site plan review application, building plan, revised site plan, and Dare County Environmental Health Department approval. The planning board reviewed this on April 12th at their regular meeting and forwarded the board of commissioners recommending approval. Staff recommends approval of the site plan as presented, and there is Jason Ward in the office, uh, audience tonight on behalf of being the applicant. So if you have any questions for him, but pretty minor site plan addition, so happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a comment. Jason, you've got a lot of history in that building. You, uh, twill cross it up there for a long time. Glad to see, uh, that connection's still intact. Any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All right. New business, item number two, requested town code amendment, Chapter 96 Seaside Regulations, 96.15 beach accesses, extension of overnight parking prohibition at the town's beach accesses from 12:00 midnight to 6:00 a.m. I know this is something that's kind of boiled back up now. We're getting ready for the summer again, and we've had some instances where our original ordinance is, they're difficult to enforce. I'll open it up to the board for discussion. Anybody like to chime in?
I had a couple of complaints about cars parked in the beach accesses that were staying in the adjacent homes. And so I went out and looked, and I saw three vehicles in one access, which was, I looked at Atlantic and Martin, and I saw a couple in another. And it was pretty clear that they were all of the same tag, all, you know, one state. So it was pretty evident to me that they were probably all staying together at the house next door. I got looking at the different accesses, and all of a sudden, I looked at Eighth Street, and currently Eighth Street has a restriction of midnight to 6:00 a.m. So why wouldn't we want it to be consistent throughout all of our accesses? To me, it just makes sense. If we're having a problem and people are experiencing problems, that we would be consistent and have the same apply. Those accesses are not intended for overflow parking, and that's the, that's the problem.
Commissioner McAvoy, you like, you ready to go?
I mean, I just, again, I still really dislike that idea that we would let the tail wag the dog. Yet again, we talked about this, I mean, 12 is not late, not on the Outer Banks, not in the summer, and, and also six is not, is, is, is sort of, uh, you know, that's, that's a, that's a real, um, time where people could be getting up, could be running the beach, could be doing all sorts of things. Now, I know the permit thing, and I guess we could go that route. You know, I think it's gonna be taxing on everybody, you know?
We do that now, correct? Yeah, we do that now.
It's already, that's already.
We have the detail now.
We have it.
Yes.
But, uh, I didn't get one. What do you get? Get one in the mail or something? I'm just on the way.
We can get you one. Yes, sir.
Wait, no, I'm serious. They can't, they all came in the mail?
No, but the notice was put out that they were available.
Right, 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 right.
That they were available.
So, so, and which I don't like because, you know, that, that obviously shows that some people, you know, the ones that are in knowledge have it, and ones that are not without knowledge don't have it. So, and even I, as I sit here, have knowledge and still don't have it. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's adding a step to everything else. I just think it's wild that we would let these, why don't we pass a resolution or something that says, hey, rental companies, we'll write a letter to all the rental companies, hey, it's your job to enforce your people to, to not be parking overnight in the park, in the, in the accesses. Put pressure on them. We, we write resolutions, we write letters to everybody else, you know, let's put it, let's put some pressure on them. Because, because this is just, I mean, this is one step towards, you know, having passes on, uh, on the beaches and being New Jersey or Florida and all that, you know? I just don't understand how we're going. And again, people that park there overnight in that restricted hour or two that we had talked about, they're not gonna come out of their house to move their car so they don't get a ticket overnight. So that, that hour or two in the middle of the night, three to four, two to four, whatever you wanna say, that's perfectly set to get the people to park overnight and not include everybody else on the beach at 12 o'clock. And 12 o'clock, that's just too early. I mean, maybe we don't stay up till 12 o'clock. I know I do. But, I mean, uh, young people do, and a lot of people that work weird shifts and get up, get out late, do as well. So we're capturing all of these people that stay, you know, that stay out late, and for what? To, we're punishing all our residents, basically, for the behavior of visitors. So, you know, I, I just don't get it. I don't get it. I mean, if the officers wanted to get in, I don't think they wanna have to enforce it, but if they do, to, to see who's in those parking spots, or if there's some reason, ulterior reason, to get into those cars, that's not proper either, you know what I'm saying? So if the, if the true reason is what we're talking about, to protect the parking space for locals, you know, if that's the true reason of this, of this rule, of this, you know, code change, that's one thing. But, you know, it, to me, it just, it literally reeks of just let, of like punishing everybody for the acts of, uh, the visitors and the inability for the rental companies to, to manage their own people. And, you know, we could put pressure on them to do what they're supposed to do, you know, and, and let their renters know that they need to not park there overnight. But I don't even see, like, like, it, I don't see the problem either that everybody's, that some of the board members may see. I don't see it. I don't see it. But, uh, regardless, this is kind of a knee-jerk move to, that in effect punishes the locals. That's how I feel about it.
We'll go back to.
I don't really get fired up about a lot of things, but this doesn't make sense to me.
I'll go back to the begin, I'll go back to what we said the last time. On the flip side of that, I see that it as beneficial for people who live here because, as it is right now, you, I mean, I have photographs, like I, I texted Derry, I was like, I'm at the beach access right now. I was doing my list for the Community Appearance Commission, and there were nine cars, all from the same house. We watched them all get out of their cars at the same time, walk up over the hill, and walk to their house. Literally walk to the house they were staying at. Those nine cars are staying there. It was half the access.
Yeah, but who's hurting? I, I mean, I, I mean.
It's hurting the people who wanna go to the beach the next morning and can't find a parking spot. I mean, I don't know if you, like, I don't know when you try to go to the beach, but I try to go to the beach. I know a lot of people I know try to go to the beach, and a lot of them don't even go to the beach in Kill Devil Hills anymore because they can't.
I just don't see that. But I, but what I, what I will say is, uh, so in turn, instead of doing what we should do and putting pressure on, on the rental companies.
But can we?
To do their job, to do what they're supposed to do. Yeah, we're powerful, we're powerful.
So that, so the rental companies would have, Casey just asked you, the rental companies would have, that can they, they can enforce code, or not?
No, of course not. I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that we put the necessary pressure on them as a board that has power to do what they're supposed to do and make sure their people don't park there overnight.
I just don't think they're gonna do that.
I mean, why, why get, I mean, this, you gotta admit, this time period is just oppressive, 12 to 6.
But you're already doing it at one access, you're doing it at Eighth Street.
Oh, but that's not in the code? That must be a sign that's left over. I have no idea.
No, it's a sign that's up on the access, no parking.
Yeah, I have no idea where that sign came from.
Midnight till 6:00 a.m.
Came from, and I didn't.
I think it's because it's a shared access.
It's the next exit.
Yeah, probably the exit. I don't know. I don't know who put it there, but on that particular access, you can't park there for midnight till 6:00.
I guess it's shared with access. I didn't, I'm not aware of that, but it's not codified, so.
Well, it needs to be then.
Yep. Naggs Head's park, parking's prohibited there between 12 and 6 at all of their accesses. Kitty Hawk is between 12 and 3. Kill Devil Hills currently, obviously, is between 2 and 4, which is what you guys are considering tonight. Ducks Southern Shore is totally different issue because there are no public beaches. Um, so there also, obviously, are no public accesses, so.
Well, somebody asked me what 2 to 4 is not doing. It's getting those people, is it not? If they're writing the tickets, it's getting those people.
Well, I, I think that's a good chance to bring the chief in and get your feedback on how 2 to 4 is going so far for your staff. Is it an enforceable time period? Would extending, extending it to six hours give you more opportunity to, uh, address these people who are abusing our oceanfront parking?
Commissioner, to my, uh, mayor, uh, to my knowledge, the, uh, police department has taken no enforcement action thus far, um, of this ordinance. We're just trying to educate the people until, you know, um, right now. Um, so that's, you know, we haven't taken any enforcement action so far.
It actually hasn't even been in effect for a full year.
Right.
And as you recall, when we discussed it last year, that was the position that we were gonna take in the, in the beginning, giving people, the residents, an opportunity to get their, first, we had to get stickers, um, but giving people the opportunity to get the sticker, educating the ones that, that did park there, whether it's a warning or whatever, um, before just coming out with a hard line enforcement. But I, I truly think the word will get around, um, that, you know, we're, we're renting this house, this is where we can park, not in the beach access.
Yeah, no, I mean, we haven't even given this a chance, like, it hasn't even been enforced. So, so, uh, you know, I, I appreciate it that it's been a year, but if, if it hasn't been enforced, we haven't even given the actual ordinance that we passed a chance. And moreover, you know, it will work. It will, if it's enforced, it will, it will work. That's why we created it. It will work. When it's, when it's enforced, it'll work. It'll effectively do exactly what you want it to do. And it's not overly, it's not overly, it's not overly affecting those who live after midnight. I mean, that's really, you know, 2 to 4 is a witching hour. That's pretty, that's pretty fair. But everything else, I mean, what are we doing here? Why are we, why are we doing this?
Trying to, trying to create, uh, beach accesses that are available for the residents.
The code we passed will do that.
It's not, hadn't done it so far.
Well, it hasn't been enforced.
Yeah, hadn't, hadn't done it so far. What does Naggs Head do for enforcement? Do you, do you know?
I, I don't. I'm not sure. I mean, I, I would imagine it's something akin to what we have. I mean, I suppose, um, as far as enforcement goes, but that's gonna be through, I mean, in reality, through police, through policing, a citation would be my, my understanding. Kinda like parking at a meter, overrunning your time, and then you get a citation for it.
Could we potentially table this and keep it as is and see what the other towns are doing, what measures they're taking, and how it's?
We, we can, but at some point, we've got to get the signage out that says what it is.
Right, 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 right.
Get the information to people for the stickers.
Can we potentially table this and let the officers enforce this for a month or two and see what happens? I mean, that's, I mean, that's all I'm asking, because we did spend a lot of time discussing this, and we haven't even, it really hasn't gotten in place.
To my knowledge, the signs haven't been posted.
Right, right.
And without posting the signs, we can't.
Well, that's not, that's not true. What, without posting signs, you can't enforce a law. When you have a law, it has to be posted, is that true?
Our intent was to begin this with, with education.
Yeah.
And, um, then with the education didn't work, you had the proper signage, you had the people that wanted to have the stickers, having the stickers. Um, as far as the staff is concerned, the time doesn't matter. Um, and once the signs go up, um, if it's the board's intent that it'd be a hard line enforcement, then that's certainly what can be done.
Let's do that. I mean, but my thought is this, uh, 12 to 6 is even more work for them. Let's make it a 2 to 4. They can run people over there, 2 to 4. It's, it's more efficient for the officers.
It's not my choice.
No, 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 I know. It's more efficient for the officers to have a two-hour period than have a six-hour period. And again, you're gonna get people that lit, that didn't buy the tag or didn't get the tag, and they live here. You're gonna get, you're overreaching. Let's nail those people. I'm with you. I'm fine. Let's get those people to park overnight. They're not gonna move their cars at 2:00 a.m. just to, to obey the rule. If they do, good. You know, they're not gonna move it back at 4:00 a.m., you know, 4:30. They're not moving back. That's why we did what we did. I just asked you guys to, like, give us a chance, what we did.
Debbie, do we have a timeline on when those signs are gonna go up?
As, as soon as we have a date. We were, we were ready to install, act up. Um, we're doing them in-house. Um, but we have a number of beach accesses and, you know, but as, as soon as, if you want, if you want them to go up with what's currently on the books, we can do that. If you want them to go up with what's been proposed, based on the conversations that I have with some board members, then we can do that. And we will enforce either one.
I would, I would wanna see them go up midnight to 6:00 a.m. No parking. Except by town permit. That's what I would prefer to see. I, I, our beach accesses aren't designed for overflow parking. That's not what they, what we put them there for.
Listen, people don't even know about this. I'm telling you, when they hear about it.
They'll know it. If you put a sign up there, they'll know about it.
No, our locals don't even know about this. I mean, those that are paying attention do. When they, when they see this, they're gonna think, why are we doing this? Like, why? But, you know, I mean, we had, we had this narrowly tailored code in place. You haven't even given it a chance.
I, I do, every bit of feedback I've gotten outside of this board has been strict enforcement of that code. Um, I think giving, expanding the hours in 12, make it much more efficient and, and make it easier for, give our law enforcement more time to address people who abuse those parking areas.
Respectfully, how does it make it more efficient? It actually gives them more time to have, to have to do it.
Because we're not operating strictly in witching hours. We're getting a little further out where if they get a call from 2 to 4, those guys may be tied up and won't have an opportunity to get out in that period.
You'll have to admit, it increases their work, 12 to 6, because they could get a call from 12 to 6 now. It, it, you have to admit, it increases the amount of work.
It increases the amount of opportunity to address the problem.
Fine, but also increases the amount of phone calls you can get from, from 12 to 2 and from 4 to 6, correct?
People can call when they want.
Increases on work.
Though it, it, potentially, but we want this rule to work for our citizens the way we designed it to.
And we designed it to work. It just hasn't been enforced. Like, I didn't say, don't enforce this for a year. I didn't say that. I don't know who did, but I didn't say that. Did you? We all voted on this. We passed it. We didn't say, don't enforce it. We didn't say, don't post it. But, you know, I'm, I'm glad they've been nice about it, but we have to roll that out first. We haven't even seen that.
Is towing an option, Counselor?
Good question. Um.
Can you look into that and get back to us?
I mean, I certainly can look into it. I, I do think a large part of this, I'm not a criminal lawyer, but I have to obviously review town ordinances and, and the fact that some of ours are criminalized, that, you know, kind of what you're saying, Commissioner McAvoy, they don't know about it, right? And I would imagine this would have to be an intentional crime. You have to have the intent to violate it. Well, if you don't know about it, how can it be intentional? The signs, and I would say that's where the sign comes in. Now, there's no argument that you're not a knowing violator.
Right.
So what we've got is a scenario where at this point, we don't have the signs, and it's not been enforced. I don't think Chief is saying that there haven't been people parked there. It's, but they've had no notice.
Not all criminals, but you agree.
Oh, not all crimes.
And most, it doesn't, you don't need to post a notice for something to be a law or not. It's simply a law in the books.
I think this one, what does require.
Why's that?
You can't, okay, speed limit. Speed limit changes from 35 to 55, but there's no sign that says that. Can I get a ticket?
But there's DOT requirements of signpost, there's all those things they've created.
For good reason.
That's fine.
And that's what we're doing here.
But you know, all criminal law is not codified. It's on signs.
No, I agree, I think, but this particular ordinance, certainly given it's a, not a state ordinance, it's not a state law.
Right.
This is a municipal ordinance.
Civil penalty.
That we're putting forward, that has historically, obviously, not been something the town of Kill Devil Hills has ever been asked to enforce.
And it's a civil penalty.
And it's happening now.
Civil penalty.
Well, right, right, right.
And not every civil penalty.
I mean, it's a parking ticket that, right.
And not every civil penalty needs to be, I mean, I want it to be a sign, for sure.
Right.
I'm just saying, like, not every civil penalty needs a sign. You agree with that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, but this one does.
This one should. It'd be nice if it does.
I think it requires it. I honestly do. I really do.
So you're saying there's a statute that requires it?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if you want one.
Let's hear it.
I move that we direct the town manager to erect signs on our beach accesses that state no parking from midnight to 6:00 a.m. except with town permit, sticker, whatever the language you wanna use. And that we effectively change the parking from, no parking from midnight until 6:00 a.m. on our beach accesses to mirror Eighth Street.
Can we add a line that, once the signs are up, that will be the, that's the green light for enforcement?
Yes, sir.
So whoever pulls in from there on out, they're gonna see it.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna know. All right, uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
And did I also hear a direction, just to be sure, to, for me to look into incorporating some form of towing as, removal of the vehicle as an enforcement mechanism?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You realize you're gonna tow local people that didn't know about this rule, didn't have the tag, after 12 o'clock? All right.
All right, moving on.
Well, I, excuse me.
Yes.
I think the, the request was for the town attorney to review that, not for us to start.
Right.
Correct. I mean, to see if I think it's even an option. Correct.
Are we gonna enforce this law?
We'll report back to you what his finding on the town.
Okay.
And just to be clear on permits, are they, are, so everybody's entitled to unlimited number of tenants for their home household, too? So that's gonna be in the code?
It's in there. That's what you just voted on.
It was already in there. That was already in there.
That's what, that's what we approved before.
Okay.
It's, it's on the.
Just tell them if you have three, four, doesn't matter. If you have, doesn't matter how many people you have in your house.
It's, it's up to.
No, I'm asking, guys, doesn't matter if you have, if you have teenagers.
I mean, I would be fine if request, requesting up to four. I mean, most, a lot of households with teenage drivers would.
I don't have a problem with the number.
No, I think there could be flexibility for.
Your screen showed the website for about seven weeks.
Fine, but two is-
The way, excuse me, the way it's worded is a maximum of two parking permits will be issued for the owner of each property, and one permit will be issued for each resident.
Oh, okay.
So that's covered, the teenager is covered.
Well, plus, what else is covered is, for example, I, I rent a house in Kill Devil Hills, I'm not the property owner, but I'm a resident, so I could get a sticker. And the property owner could get a sticker. You could get a sticker, two stickers, and then the residents of your house could get a sticker. You'll, you'll get plenty, you'll be fine.
That covers your concern.
Yep.
Any more discussion or clarification for item number three hundred, new business? All right, hearing none, let's move on to, oh, pardon, item number two, move on to item number three, two thousand twenty-seven Kill Devil Hills Beach Erosion Control and Flood and the Health Protection Works Project Beach Nourishment Capital Project Ordinance. That is a tongue twister.
That is a lot, and I'm glad you said all of that, because I, I won't, I'll just simply say, is this, this is the beginning of our, um, budget ordinance for the upcoming project, and this speaks specifically to the twenty-five thousand for the design permitting and professional services. Obviously, this will increase, um, as we get into the next fiscal year, but this gets it established in this fiscal year. So I would appreciate a, a motion to adopt this as presented.
All right, any questions or discussion around beach nourishment planning? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Someone would like to make it?
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-seven Kill Devil Hills Beach nur- beach erosion control and flood hurricane protection capital project ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Oh. Ready to-
Sorry.
Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next item I was anxious to get to.
All right, item number four, oh, yes, our new binders presentation of the town manager's recommended-
Have a good night.
Budget fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, um, as presented to you this evening from Mr. Oscar and his scout outfit, um, we are pleased to present the Kill Devil Hills Fiscal Year twenty-five, twenty-six Recommended Budget. It's in balance according with provisions of the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. Um, as you all know, the statutes require that the budget ordinance not be adopted um, any earlier than ten days after it's presented, and no later than July one. Before the budget is adopted, the board will need to conduct a public hearing. Also, a work session, recommending that the work session be scheduled for Wednesday, May the twenty-eighth, which is your next, um, meeting this month, and then the public hearing on Monday, June the ninth. Um, just to point out, as you all are aware of, we did have a reevaluation this year. The current, um, tax in our current year, which would be the prior year for this budget, is point three five five per one hundred valuation. The revenue neutral rate for our, um, tax year, which is a formula that's mandated by statute, is point two three three two, and the recommended budget that you've been presented this evening is a tax rate of twenty-eight cents per one hundred. Please, um, as you're reviewing it, questions? Myself, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, any of the department heads, are there assistants for the specific, um, departments? We'd be more than happy to talk with you if you'd like to before the work session. But just want to thank all those people that I just mentioned and the people on their staff for all the work that they've done with this budget. Um, I think you'll be pleased, so I look forward to working with you on it, um, on the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
This isn't really, we don't need to take action on this now. We're just presenting it.
You need to, um, just schedule the public, um, hearing.
Work session and then the hearing.
Right.
Yeah, so you're just scheduling the budget work session and the budget public hearing.
Well, um, I'll entertain a motion to schedule that hearing.
I'll make a motion, um, that we schedule the budget work session and budget public hearing for the town manager's recommended budget fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All done with new business. Committee reports? Any committee reports to chair?
Um, I attended my first Community Resource Advisory Council meeting, um, last week, the week before, a week and a half ago. Um, and it was great, I was able to meet, meet the CRC down, um, in the Buxton area and very informative. And also, the girls are up three to zero.
Oh, good.
And then we scored.
That makes fun. Nice.
Very good, very good.
And we got a hockey game at seven.
Yep.
You got my frown turned upside down.
So, I knew, I knew that would do it.
That was, did the trick.
Very easy.
Anything else for committee reports? Hearing none, Commissioner's Agenda.
I have an item. I passed out to y'all a copy of a resolution from Dare County. I was, I was watching the meeting and they, uh, had passed a resolution opposing the proposed increase in insurance premium for state employees. Um, and, uh, I thought, how neat would that be if Kill Devil Hills did the same? Here we are with the First Flight High School, Middle School, all the school complex right here in the, the center of town. Kill Devil Hills has, um, has worked hard and, and has been a strong advocate for teachers and school employees and students of North Carolina for quite some time, working with the Education Foundation on teacher housing, and working with the Dare County Board of Education on various joint projects, including, Debbie, you'll recall this, the difficult task of the tri-party agreement, um, that actually allowed the high school to be built here. Kill Devil Hills has always stepped up front, uh, and put the best foot forward. The concession and, and waiving of fees coupled with a desire for a positive outcome has always been a desire of previous boards in Kill Devil Hills and this board, and with the very hard work and dedication of Kill Devil Hills staff, the results have been phenomenal. I would ask for a consensus, um, that we have the town clerk, uh, fashion a resolution, uh, that puts it in Kill Devil Hills language, um, and, uh, that we, uh, move forward with it and distribute a resolution. Uh, each of you have a copy, and I know it's a very limited time that you had time to review it, uh, but, uh, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'll second your motion.
Yeah, I would be-
Yep, I support.
Well, uh, are we making a motion or consensus?
Just getting a consensus is all I'm asking for, for Michael to put, uh, put together a resolution for your signature.
Yeah, we are all aboard for that, Terry. Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
And it would eventually come back on the mayor's agenda, I would think? On the consent agenda, okay.
To be recorded.
Yeah, to record it.
They're, they're giving the consensus for it to be developed and, and stamped with mayor and then sent out.
Perfect.
And then we'll bring it back at the next meeting to the recordation.
Perfect, yep. Thank you very much.
Do we have anything else under Commissioner's Agenda tonight? Any score updates? Okay.
Actually, four is a grip.
Four is a grip, right.
It turned into one.
All right. I have a couple of things real quick from Mayor's Agenda. Uh, Police Week, our board just wants to give a shout out to all of our law enforcement staff for patrol and criminal investigations, to animal control and the PD office staff. Our entire community appreciates all that you do to keep Kill Devil Hills safe and secure, and we each and every one of you, very happy Police Week. Chief, thank you, sir, thank you for your team. We're awful proud of you guys, we support you as much as we can, so thank you. And speaking of KGHPD, uh, I was running some tasks this morning, this afternoon around two o'clock, and on the corner of Martin and one fifty-eight, someone had spilled a tremendous amount of rock and dirt and created a tremendous hazard. And I came back five minutes later and there were two police trucks out there, and our officers, they looked like they were working on the chain gang out there, just sweeping that stuff up and getting it out of the way and securing the area. Uh, they were the best dressed road street crew I've ever seen, but thank you, because that was a dangerous situation, and it was a big mess, and your, your, your crew was right on it, secured the area, got it cleaned up, prevented wrecks, prevented any damage to vehicles, so, thank you, sir. Please extend my thanks to them.
And the people who did it actually came back and cleaned it up, right?
Oh, they did.
Yeah.
Good.
That's what Steve told me.
Yeah, I'd say, you gotta give Stephen a shout out, too.
Yeah, yeah, Steve.
And I think I saw a shovel, so.
Yeah, yeah. Who, who dropped it, came back.
I appreciate the person who-
And the company that dropped it.
Dropped it, come back and took-
They brought their equipment back and cleaned it up.
Very good, that was a nice way to handle that.
If anybody with Kill Devil Hills would have been more than willing to do what needed to do to keep our town safe.